It's six o'clock, I'm calling to order the meeting for Tuesday, June 12th, 2012. We have the invocation given by Commissioner Holberg and the pledge will be led by myself.
Please stand, bow our heads. Father, we're here today to ask your blessing and guidance in the performance of our duties as elected officials. We pray for strength, love, knowledge, and understanding. Help us to recognize and solve the problems that are presented. Make our solutions fair and just to the best interests of everyone. Help us to overcome our shortcomings and keep us united as a team to work for the betterment of the city and its people. We pray in your name, amen.
Please say the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Thank you. We'll move into presentation and delegation. First, we'd like to recognize Brian Brock of the Fire Department as May 2012's strongest link award recipient.
Good evening, commissioners. It's a pleasure to present this most strongest link to Captain Brian Brock. To Captain Brian Brock from Griffin Fire Rescue. Our department, just like the city in general, has been very headstrong in leadership development of our people. And one thing we have tried to do at Griffin Fire Rescue is tie in that leadership development into some type of community service. That's why we strongly encourage our personnel, especially our officers, to attend the leadership Griffin Spaulding Program through our Chamber of Commerce. I know many of you have probably been through that program. Commissioner Holberg, you were in Class One, I was in Class Two, and I know some of you have done it too. And it's an excellent opportunity to develop future leaders of our community. Last year, when I advertised the program in our department, I asked for volunteers, and of course, Captain Brock came forth and said he would do it. And when he went through the program, he had a tour of one of our local industries. And when he was touring this industry, he was actually able to come up with an innovative product that he pretty much invented and designed himself that, I'll be honest with you, if he patented it, he'd probably make a billion dollars with what he's come up with. But it's an excellent example how this type of opportunities has certainly worked to our advantage. We went to a large diameter hose several years ago under Chief Strickler's leadership. And I'll be honest with you, we had a couple of accidents with these hoses because it is very large and very heavy. Captain Brock has invented something here, and I'd like for him to take, show it to you, a way to safely bring the large diameter hose off the back of a fire engine. And Brian, you want to show them what you've got there?
Sure. We were having a problem with finding those.
Basically, what was happening was that hose is on top of the truck, and when firefighters would pull the hose off, tools that were attached to the hose loosely using rope would sometimes come loose and injure firefighters. And also, when we would secure the hose around the hydrant, if it wasn't properly secured, it could come loose and actually the large coupling on the hose could actually break bones and things like that. We didn't have that, but that can happen also.
I came up with a design that basically was a strap that secures the tools to the hose and actually has a large loop, ten-foot diameter loop that hangs off the back of the truck so that you're able to safely snatch the hose off the truck and stay clear of the hose and the tools that are attached to the hose. Wrap the hydrant with this strap and stand clear as the truck pulls off, eliminate the impossibility of injury to the firefighter. And also, this strap is rated six thousand pounds, so it's just going strong to handle the path that's getting through. I don't know, the thing like you said, I don't know.
It was a very innovative design. Again, it's a perfect example of why we send people to leadership training to work with our local industries to innovate this. And Captain Brock's family is here with him tonight, and most of you may know, he doesn't actually claim him, his father, Major Brock from the Police Department, and he doesn't claim him, but his family is back there with him too. But we're proud to present Captain Brian Brock the strongest link to the chain award and for his innovation and leadership.
Next week, I'd like to recognize a proclamation declaring 2012 as the bicentennial of the War of 1812 in the City of Griffin. Commissioner Mark Williams.
Madam Chair, I move, we approve the proclamation.
Second.
I'm a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, let me know on my show hand.
And?
Seven, zero.
This is a proclamation celebrating the bicentennial of the War of 1812. Whereas the bicentennial of the War of 1812, sometimes referred to as the Second War of Independence, officially begins on 18 June 2012. And whereas President James Madison signed a declaration of war against Great Britain on 18 June 1812. And whereas the sacrifices by our soldiers in the War of 1812 further defend the liberties previously won in the American Revolution. And whereas the conflict and bravery shown would inspire Francis Scott Key to write a poem describing the bombardment of Fort McHenry in Baltimore Harbor that would become our country's national anthem, the Star Spangled Banner. And whereas USS Constitution, known as Old Ironsides, was built from live oak trees from St. Simon Island, Georgia. And whereas Fort Hawkins, a U.S. Army and Georgia militia headquarters located in Macon, played an important role in the defense of our country in the War of 1812 by supplying all command and logistic support for the Southern Theater and by Fort personnel participating directly in the Creek War and the Battle of New Orleans. And whereas the Treaty of Ghent was signed on 24 December 1814 to end the War of 1812, which further solidified our independence. And whereas many Georgia residents can trace their lineage back to these patriotic early settlers and soldiers in the War of 1812. And whereas descendants of the veterans of the War of 1812 chartered the Georgia State Society within the General Society of the United States Daughters of 1812 on 18 June 1901, whose primary purpose is to promote a general awareness of the history of the War of 1812 throughout this state and among the citizens of Georgia and the nation. Now therefore, we, the commissioners of the City of Griffin, do hereby proclaim the year 18, correction, the year 2012 as the bicentennial of the War of 1812 and urge all citizens to become more knowledgeable of the role of the War of 1812 played in the history of our great nation and our great state of Georgia. In witness thereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Griffin to be affixed this 12th day of June 2012, designed by our chairperson, Senator Reed Ward, and City Manager Kenny Smith.
Great, thank you. This is a great project.
We'd like to invite everybody down to Fort Hawkins Monday, June 18th at 10:30 for the dedication of the marker commemorating Fort Hawkins' role in the War of 1812. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll review financials for April 2012.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Good evening. First item on the list will be the cash report. And one thing that we'll notice is that we do have a debt service payment coming up in June, so the cash account for the debt service reserve is growing, and that money will be released at the end of June.
Sales tax is doing really well, isn't it?
I'm sorry, say again?
Sales tax.
Fail fast.
Doing very well.
Yes. Any questions specifically on the cash report? Hearing none. I'd like to move on to the SPOS and lost statement. Again, here we're clicking on target with the projections for the local option sales tax. Total collected fiscal year to date, $2.9 million, and that's going to basically put us ahead of schedule by about $200,000 or so.
It's a breath of fresh air, isn't it?
Yes, sir. And on SPOS, though, the special purpose local option sales tax, that's coming in roughly at 80% based on the number of months that we have, have to report. Again, for April, there's been zero collections because that money's been diverted to cover the capital on the bond side of the house, on the construction. Now, the question is, are we going to come in with another $200,000 per month? It's very possible. I've not seen the reports yet, so we have moved some monies off to the end of the SPOS program because we're expecting some sort of shortfall there, roughly about 8%.
We will receive a check for May and June.
Yes, sir. I do anticipate that.
Which attracts the same, it'll be about $200,000.
Two to three hundred, yes, depending on the, about the mid-range there, yes. And then moving on to the interim statements by fund. And these numbers are through April. And I'll entertain any questions that you may have.
Now, they track the budget nicely, most places.
We are holding back on some other expenditures for the rest of the year, through June, actually the next couple of weeks, and we'll be presenting a rollover request for the second meeting of July to amend this budget for 2012 and bring the projects forward into 2013.
That counts the reason why it's 76% on expenditures, not where we should be, so you're hoarding it, right?
We have some very large projects underway, so those require a substantial amount of cash.
Hoarding is not bad.
Most companies are cash-rich right now. A lot of this money that's sitting here is going to be released the next couple of months.
So we're looking at 103% property tax, and we've got the May, June, and 60 days out for?
Yes, and those numbers typically trail off to five-digit numbers, so somewhere between 50,000 to 70,000 per month for May and June. So I don't anticipate a great deal more. Probably 4,000, 4,200,000 or so, projected, 4.2 million. Do you have any questions, sir? We're good, though.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move into citizen comments. At this time, the chairperson opened the floor to comments from the audience. Comments should relate to a specific agenda item not listed on the agenda for a public hearing or to a concern within the jurisdiction of the city. Commission meetings serve the purpose of conducting city business and are not a forum for the unlimited expression of opinions. The chairperson reserves the right to limit comments to matters remaining to city business and may refer speakers to the city manager or other staff for resolution. Is there anyone to my left that would like to come forward and address the board? Is there anyone to the right that would like to come forward and address the board? Thank you. We'll move into public hearings.
Can we have to, are those for the general sessions?
No, we'll just go, continue.
Continue.
Okay, public hearings are conducted to allow public comments on specific advertised issues such as rezoning, ordinances, policy development, operating budgets, and other legislative action to be considered by the city commission. First, receive comments regarding a list of potential streets for sidewalk improvements. Dr. Brent Keller will address.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
Twice today on the subject. First thing we'll take in order will be the streets, that's in your package, and I'll read them out loud for the record. And we have a pre-bid meeting coming up Friday at 10 o'clock, so we'll be able to move forward, and the bid package will open next month in July. Streets on the list, and the caveat is, depending on the bid, depends on how many streets we get done, just like last time. We have Palace Street, Halliburton, Wheeler, Turner Street, East Chapel, North 16th, Cherry Street.
Todd Keller, we're doing sidewalks.
You have to tell.
We're doing streets and sidewalks.
That's what we're doing.
We have an agenda item for streets later on for them to approve, to actually approve the list of streets. The public hearing is just to hear comments on the sidewalk.
We think we have a lot of sidewalks for that.
Got excited about that paper, didn't we? All right, sidewalks.
All right. Let's try that one. We beat this one this morning, too. All right, streets, sidewalks are 12th Street, Halliburton, Maple, South Eight, Blanton, Beck, Tilney, and Maple. Questions?
That's a lot of money on Maple.
There you go.
We've had a sidebar thing before the meeting, just to talk about these different projects, and?
Excuse me, for anybody in the audience that doesn't have this list, could you repeat those?
Sure.
Let's repeat them one time.
All right, the sidewalks that we're proposing to go to bid on is 12th Street, Halliburton, Maple, and then there's a second section of Maple. There's South Eight, there's Blanton, there's Beck, and Tilney.
The reason I ask that is I see some East College services out there that can relax.
Understood. Questions?
We've got these proposed, but that only has to do with the bid. In other words, we really won't know what we'll be able to pay them until we get the bids out, is that correct?
Yeah, put the concrete down, yes, no.
Okay. The, why is Maple listed twice?
Because it was two sections, I had to revisit the other, the second section.
Right. Okay, and the second section is the most expensive part.
Is curb and gutter and pipe.
Curb, gutter, and pipe.
And bridge.
And bridge.
Well, I'd like to see us approve at least some of these so we can get going. To my way of thinking, the second section of Maple at the 180 is just too expensive for, at the moment.
And on the Commissioner Ward in regards to 12th Street and Halliburton, would you be satisfied with just the Halliburton at this point, or?
Uh huh, uh huh.
So maybe eliminate 12th Street for $64,000, $650,000 in the second phase of Maple at this point? And then take a bid for?
What was that, eliminate?
The 12th Street, the two more expensive, this is the new list that came up from this morning.
For Halliburton.
So keep Halliburton, South Eight Street, Blanton Street, Beck Street, Tilney Avenue, and the Maple Drive portion to the dairy. And that would cover about 50% of the proposed half a million dollars of the SPOS dollars, and then at a future date, we can come back in and look at the next.
Right, and if Maple does turn out to, the bridge and everything turns out to be too expensive, we can find some other streets in that particular area that we can certainly come back to the drawing board on and provide some sidewalks, some more sidewalks or different sidewalks to people in the fourth district.
Well, let me understand this, because I'm going to bid specifically with street, with sidewalk, not similar to street. Streets, we're going out for lame miles of pavement. My understanding that we're going to, we're going to go to bid on Halliburton, South Eight, Blanton, Beck, Tilney, and Maple to the dairy, correct? Because I'm not going to bid the rest of it.
Correct, and then that will cover about, will give us a better idea of how much money's left of a possible half a million.
Well, I just wanted you to see when you saw the bid that that's what's going out.
Right, no, I was realizing that that might be pulled out, but that will create the money as well.
All right.
Well, you all have called this as a public hearing, and you've got people here, I think you're probably wanting to speak, so you need to listen to them before you make any decisions, et cetera.
Okay.
So this is the hearing part.
Okay, Brent, are you finished?
Yes, ma'am.
Again, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come forward and address the board concerning this public hearing? Please come.
Just a quick question.
Please give us your name and address for the minute.
Allen Nurem, 1213 Maple Drive.
Thank you.
What section of Maple are they talking about taking off? If you're talking about taking two, just the dairy, what section?
So it'll come from the dairy back to town with the food path.
So it'll go all the way from the town to dairy. What section of Maple would you be leaving?
From that, from the dairy to Westwood Drive.
Is there anyone else that would like to address this issue? Thank you.
I don't see an item on the regular agenda to vote on this, but do we, I guess the question is, do we have a consensus on what we just agreed to?
We struck on this list, 12th Street and the first Maple, for 180.
Yeah, okay. Okay, we have consensus. Okay, received comments regarding the proposed budget for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2012, and ending June 30th, 2013. Director of Administrative Services Marcus Swat will address.
We've complied with the notification requirements, the advertising. We've had our first public hearing, this is the second, and we're here to entertain comments from the public and questions from you, if you have any.
Again, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to come forward and address this item on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next item. Received comments regarding a request for a special use permit to allow for a hospice center to be constructed on the parcel located at 1225 West Solomon Street. Director of Planning and Development Services Taurus Freeman will address.
Madam Chairman, members of the Board of Commissioners, this request was heard by the Planning Commission on May 21st, 2012. They recommended approval with seven conditions. Will this be a for-profit or a not-for-profit hospice facility? More than likely a for-profit, so it's a mid-for-profit.
Okay.
I, well, I'll lay in the way I want to speak, but I have a question, comment. In fact, can I?
Go ahead.
Can I go on, Taurus, there? I went through the planning staff recommendations, and the first six, I think, are solid right on. The seventh one, the hours of operation for delivery and service vehicles through the proposed West Broad Street entrance should be limited, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And if I get a chance to move, to approve this, I'd very much like to strike that one. It goes on to say, except for unforeseen circumstances. Now, as I understand that, there are only about six actual hospice beds in that area. It's pretty limited to people who'll be there. And with ambulances and requests for emergency oxygen or goodness knows what with the hospice situation, I could see where unforeseen circumstances would be popping up all the time. So it appears to me that restriction is, is superfluous. I understand the intent, but I think the limited number of beds in a 24-hour hospice office, that's unnecessary. Do you want to comment one way or another?
No, sir, it was just a condition, just thinking about the residential area where the site is located. However, it's up to your will if you choose not to approve this condition along with the request.
Does the applicant have any feel one way or the other on that item?
Yes, there was some discussion during the Planning Commission meeting regarding that. We revised it somewhat, however, the main purpose and intent was, was still intact.
This is a planned residential.
That is correct.
Okay. Okay, once again, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to come forward and address this item on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next one. Received comments regarding an ordinance amending the Code of City of Griffin, Georgia at Chapter Six, alcoholic beverages to change the age of employees licensed to sell and distribute alcoholic beverages from 21 years to 18 years of age. Director of DDA, Adam Causey, will address.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is a minor amendment to the current alcohol ordinance. Apparently, our ordinance allows 21-year-olds to dispense alcohol unless they're a stock person at a grocery store. The county and the state allow 18-year-olds, so we're just bringing it in line with other communities so that our businesses really aren't at a disadvantage when they, when their staff may be limited.
What is the minimum?
21.
Okay. Okay. Once again, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to come forward and address this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on into our.
I just want to say, first of all, I'm going to vote against this, but are we saying that we're just going, even if the county and state are, if there are possibilities there'll be a wrong, we're just going to vote on it just to, consider that just because the county and the state is doing it?
I don't have a problem with it.
All right. I know, I know, I'm, I know I'm probably the only one going to vote against it, but I just think that it's a shame that we would vote on something if we vote yes for something. Two wrongs don't make a right.
Well, that's why I was saying I don't have a problem with it. I'm not voting for it because it's in line with the state and the county. I just don't have a problem with it in general. So that's, me personally, that's why I'm voting for it.
I don't have a problem with the, the young man that came up, he was a very, seemed to be a very intelligent young man that was, and I saw his point, but I just think that I don't, I'm against alcohol altogether, but I just don't see why, just because the county and state think, vote on it. I don't think that, I think our vote should be something other than just because the county and state voted for it.
I don't think that's, that's one reason I'd vote for it for this, but the other is, you have these young waiters and waitresses working their way through college and goodness knows what, and this impacts directly on their ability to be a waiter. And so, I think it's might be two rights don't make a wrong.
I think that it's a lot more that they could be doing rather than serving alcohol. We could see with all the damage that alcohol has done to not only young people, but to older people also. And I think, I just see that as a big problem. And I'm just letting you know that I'm not going to be voting on it. I would rather think that we would vote on something that's going to be beneficial to the citizens of this great city, and rather than just voting because the county and the state has voted on.
Well, we can add in that they did get 156 signatures in favor of doing something like that, that at least they did go and make a pretty strong effort to voice their opinion on that issue, so.
Yeah, we've probably got more people than that listening to rap music, but I don't think it's best for the skill. I drew majority.
Okay, okay. Is there anyone else that would like to address this item? Okay. Please come forward. Would you give us your name and address for the minute, please?
My name is Marty Crouch. I live at 407 Audubon Circle, Griffin, Georgia. I understand your hesitation to let a minor handle alcohol, but you're not asking them to sell it. I mean, you're not asking them to drink it. I go to the grocery store, I buy a bottle of wine, I have to wait till they call somebody over just so I can check out. You go to a restaurant, and these people should be able to earn a living, and like Dick said, it does impact people when they're trying to be a waiter or a waitress. You're not asking them to drink it, you're just asking them to deliver it to someone who is qualified to drink it.
Okay, and I think I see it, just before you probably hear me saying this again. I understand what you're saying. I understand what you're saying, I do see some benefits in it, but I think the sin is greater than the benefit.
Well, there are a lot of opportunities to sin out there.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward and address the item on the agenda? Okay, thank you. We'll move into our consent agenda now.
Madam Chair, if there's no objection from, I would move that we approve the entire consent agenda at one vote. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the complete consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, let it be known by your hands, seven to zero. And we'll move into our regular agenda, if I can find it. Okay. Consider approval of a resolution adopting the annual fiscal year 2012-13, 2012-2013 operating budget appropriating expenditures and projected revenues for specified purposes, functions, and activities by fund for the budget period and the capital improvement program.
Madam Chair, I move we approve the budget as presented. Second motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve the budget as presented. Is there any further discussion?
It's an excellent job.
All in favor, let it be known by your hands, seven to zero. Consider a request for a special use permit to allow for a hospice center to be constructed on the parcel located at 1225 West Solomon Street.
Madam Chair, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I move we approve this special use permit with the first six conditions listed in the staff report and removing the separate. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, let it be known by your hands, seven to zero. Consider a signed application, appeal Article 12 from Article 12 dash, what's that, 06, six dot H of the City of Griffin Unified Development Code. Planning Director Taurus Freeman will address.
This sign has been utilized and permitted for signage by the Georgia Department of Transportation for an outdoor sign permit since December of 1986. It was also renewed in January of 2012. The request is to reduce the setback requirements is based on the construction of a new updated sign as opposed to the current sign that has been obsolete. Based on the sign ordinance, staff recommend denial of the sign application. It is staff's recommendation, however, with cooperation from Kroger and other property owners, roads were closed and allowances were made to facilitate this new development. Based on this continued collaboration, staff recommends approval of the appeals. Mr. Frank Harris.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. So staff is recommending approval of the appeal?
That is correct.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, let it be known by your hands, seven to zero. Consider first reading of an ordinance amending the Code of City of Griffin, Georgia at Chapter 6, alcoholic beverages to change the age of employees licensed to sell and distribute alcoholic beverage from 21 to 18 years of age.
Madam Chair, I move we approve this ordinance.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, let it be known by your hands, six, one. Consider a one-year lease between the City of Griffin and Newton Holdings LP for the public parking lot at 202 West Solomon Street for $6,000 per year, plus the cost of utilities and taxes.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, let it be known by your hands, seven to zero. Consider a contract between the City of Griffin and Falcon Design Consultants, LOC, for transportation, planning, and engineering services for the North Hill Street corridor for $589,130 in accordance with the livable center initiative and SLOSP program.
Madam Chair, I move we approve, and I have a question. Second, what a question.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Okay, as I read through this, this is a considerable chunk of money, but I went through the whole list, and it says the planning and the engineering design and everything. So we're going to get from this all of the actual blueprints and design work that we need that we can bid this out. No more intermediary.
That's correct. This is several projects put into one. And we wanted one firm to do it because they all connect essentially up the North Hill Street corridor and dealing with three different design firms. If we've been at three different, several times, frankly, would have been a nightmare, I think.
Because I know Commissioner Ward this morning had a concern, but this is going to get going, but this does everything we need to do, and we can bid it out.
And then we can move to construction in phases based on the money that we're getting from the ARC on the downtown stuff, and then later we'll probably have to wait and see what happens with T-SLOS to move forward with full construction on some of the others.
Also see that ARC is paying about 40% of this, $204,000, and that, is that a guaranteed recovery from them?
That is, and the 40% is a little off. They actually, that 204 is a chunk of a much larger piece that they're giving to us, but this is only for the engineering part, so they'll be giving us even more during the construction.
Good.
So of that 589, about 240 is going to be our share. County's going to pay 40.
Right.
And then the ARC will be the 204.
Correct. And this is the, we did an intergovernmental agreement with Spalding County back in December, if you remember.
Right.
Because there's some shared right-of-way, and then they've got McIntosh all themselves up there, but they agree that it would be in everyone's best interest to have one firm come in and look at all those intersections and really have a unified design all the way up that street, which is really, frankly, needed sorely.
I think that's the right way to handle it. I'm just delighted we're moving ahead here finally.
We budgeted, or the SLOSP has $3 million budgeted for the North Hill Street corridor section.
Right.
Our share of the money will come out of that $3 million.
Correct.
And then you're anticipating with our $3 million, possibly leverage an additional $8 million. Is that seven, eight, depending on-
Well, I guess what would be left over would be, we don't have, $3 million would never cover the three intersections up there. There's probably just too much right-of-way to acquire, and I don't, we don't know what the final design and final cost is going to be. That's what Falcon Design is going to do for us. But yes, we would use the leftover funds to leverage either state G-DOT money or, we all know it happens July 31st, and there could be additional monies there from our local T-SLOS.
Where is Falcon, what is it? Falcon Design-
Falcon Design-
... in Atlanta?
They're out of Locust Grove. They're actually very, very close to us. They're actually here, John Palmer-
Good. That's why I was going to ask-
And John Hayes and Adam Price are here, and they have worked with us on some right-of-way improvement plan with Dr. Keller over here on the railroad tracks, which will be a part of this, and they were very, very, they were the best firm that understood the complicated nature of this and the most responsive bid.
A question, Adam, a clarification. My understanding when I talked to you last week was that this engineering plan would only include the right-of-way of the intersection, the street intersection. It has nothing to do with sidewalks and streets, the planes.
Correct. Well, these plans for downtown, it will include sidewalks.
Mm-hmm.
It will engineer some pedestrian improvements for downtown.
Mm-hmm.
Likewise, along the north, what we call the North Hill right-of-way plan, which includes that area around where the railroad track crosses Hill Street and some intersections there, so that will include some sidewalk improvements and also some parking pad improvements in the right-of-way. As you know, on some of those streets where people's homes are, where they were built so long ago, they didn't really have driveways.
Okay, and that is what, that's in this downtown area?
Yeah, it's to the left, to the east and west of Hill Street, 8th Street and 6th Street from, is it Chapel? Chapel down. A lot of people parking the right-of-way there because where else are they going to park? So we're going to give them a little parking pads for them so they're not killing grass along the right-of-way. And then when we move up North Hill Street, when I say right-of-way, because a lot of these intersections right now are so poorly designed, especially 6th Street Blanton where there's buildings in the right-of-way, some of those buildings are going to have to go, so we're going to have to acquire some right-of-way during, when we redesign the intersections. But when those are done, the construction part will include sidewalks. Now, we may not at the outset have enough to throw sidewalks all the way up North Hill Street, but we'll do where we can in relation to these intersections.
To the intersection?
Yes, and then-
Okay. That's what I thought you told me.
Then we bridge those gaps, just to do the sidewalk program now.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor, let it be known by your hands, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Okay. Consider a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2011-2012 operating budget for the purchase of furniture in the amount of $12,975 for systems operations, new configuration for SCADA systems.
Madam Chair, I move we approve the amendment, the operating budget amendment. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, let it be known by your hands, seven to zero. Consider approval of an award bid for 2012 tree assessment services to Technical Forestry Services in the amount of $43,500.
You should also, I'm sorry, you should also have a copy of that contract that came in a little late, so if you'll make your motion to approve the award of the bid and the award of the contract to that same, when you kill two birds in one shot, you'll do that thing.
Does anybody make that motion? Make a motion to approve the bid and the contract as presented? Second.
Okay. I have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, let it be known by your hands, seven to zero. Consider a list of streets to be resurfaced under SLOSP Phase 2, Director Public Works. And he chose, Dr. Keller will address.
Here you go. As I mentioned before, the streets on the list are Palace Street, Halliburton, Wheeler Street, Turner Street, East Chapel, North 16th, Cherry Street, North 10th, East College, Maple, West Poplar Street, Pine Valley Road, Piedmont Road, North Pine Hill Road, Beck Street, Pamela Drive, and South 18th. And we'll go as far as we can go when we see the money come in.
This week, y'all did some patching of Crescent.
Crescent and Maddox because they're being paved by DOT L-MIG from one end to the other.
And when will we know about that?
When will you know about it?
Yeah, you said it's going to be paid for by LARP funds. When will they become available?
No, they're paving them. It's already been let. We're just getting ready for them to come in like we do every year. We're just waiting on their contractor.
And Crescent.
Crescent and Maddox.
Question on North Pine Hill Road. That whoop-de-doo there with all that sinking over the old landfill, repaving gives us repaved whoop-de-doo's.
That's correct.
We're going to flatten it out a little bit?
We're going to leave that road alone and resurface and level it.
So we're going to do all of North Hill Pine Hill Road from-
We're going to go from 16 to, I think it's the Country Club, I have to look at the lane mark.
Yeah, where it wasn't repaved before, but it won't, it won't smooth it out, it's just going to repurpose it.
We'll level it, and it'll smooth it out, but the issue is, is methane gas, it continues to leave voids, and that's why-
I understand that, but you're, now you're saying we are going to level it out?
Level and pave.
West Poplar's going to go from where to where?
End to end. Did you see the dollar amount that's on there?
Recorded-
$14,500 feet on the record.
And you'll be two feet above the curb, so it'll be a big-
That's okay, you can surf when it rains.
Good, they may have to.
Madam Chair-
Your future job is going to be a milling machine operator.
If we need a motion to- If we're going to, if we need a motion to approve this list, I so move.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, let it be known by your hands, seven to zero. Consider the purchase and installation of 10 R450 data collectors for automatic meter reading from Delta Municipal Supply in the amount of $120,000.
Madam Chair, I move we approve, and again, I have a question. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Is this all we're going to need, or is this just-
Oh, no, this is the beginning.
Okay.
Each year from here on out, there'll be about 25 of them until we, 2017. At that time, we will have about, we'll have 96 of them in the air. Anything from that point out, we're going to, we'll go to a different type of reading on the meters.
How many do we have?
They've guaranteed us that they'll read every meter within the system that we currently have with, I think it's 84 collectors.
Including the county system?
The existing county system. Anything from that point out is going to be collected on a 900 drive-by unit.
How many do we have installed now?
Right now, four, and we're putting four up in July as soon as they fill the tanks. We're waiting on the tanks to be filled, so those contractors will be out, and then we'll put them on the existing tanks. And we have a propagation study, and we'll determine the highest and best place to collect the most amount of meters in the county. We can collect the city 99.9% right now.
So we need a total of about 135 by two-
Yeah, I think I'd have to look at the propagation studies, more than that, it's like 182, which we're not going to do. What we're going to do, because the cost efficiency is put in, I think it's 84, I don't have the exact, it's between 84 and 92, that will guarantee the existing 24,000 meters that's in the city and the county to be read. At that point, if the county ever begins to grow again, we will be in a position to put the 900 unit in, and we'll read that with drive-by units, because it'll be another million and a half dollars just put up collectors, and it doesn't make sense to do that when you can go out and collect it by drive-by.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor, let it be known by your hands, seven to zero. Consider the purchase of 3,600 R450 series Neptune water meters for automatic meter reading from Delta Municipal Supply.
Madam Chair, I move we approve. We're going to begin with a question. Second. How far, how long does this take us for meters?
Through this year, this will bring us, we got about 6,600 in the ground, this will give us right at 10, and that means we've still got 14 to go.
Okay. How long do you think it'll take to get?
We programmed it to be completed 2016 slash 17, unless we get a windfall of additional funding. Right now, all our meters being installed by staff, so we'd be limited if we ended up, we'd have to contract some of it out.
Will we be able to start converting some of the meter reader routes soon?
We have 19 routes completed, and we're in the process of, we have weekly meetings now, and when you say, we're waiting on a couple of software situations that we're working out, and the data will become directly into the system.
Have you gotten over to Metro, Middlebrook, and that area yet?
I'd have to look.
So I know you've been away for a while.
Okay. Is that it? All in favor, let it be known by your hands, seven to zero. Consider a resolution to amend the City of Griffin Water Waste Water fiscal year 2011-2012 operating budget in the amount of $20,000 for the water channel measuring instrument for the water leading the Steel Branch Reservoir.
Madam Chair, I move we approve this budget resolution. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, let it be known by your hands, seven to zero. Consider acceptance of a grant from Coweta Fed Trust Board for the Fed Transport Deluxe Skid Unit FDHP-12-160 with a value of $9,635.85 for use in the fire department.
I believe that we approved.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion?
Yes, question.
I think we ought to-
Sorry, question you have. How far, how long do this put us?
I'm sorry, sir.
With this, are we going to be up to date with this, or are we going to need to purchase more?
No, no, sir, we'll be fine. This is actually a bonus. This is basically a skid unit slides at the back of a pickup truck and basically converts that pickup truck into a small fire truck, and it gives us a lot of flexibility when it comes to storms and other events, give us an extra piece of equipment.
I have, I just have a silly upfront question. What in the world is the Coweta Fed Trust doing over here buying this equipment? It's a good idea, but I think the way I watch-
They offered, they offered and I took it.
They offered, you took it.
Yeah, all three, there's three EMCs that actually give out grants for this county, and we got, we were successful on three of them this year.
Is that it? All in favor, let me know by your hands, seven to zero. Consider approval to declare vehicle surplus and advertise for sale on GovDeals.com.
Madam Chair, I move we approve the list presented for sale on Gov.
I have a motion and a second to- I have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, let me know by your hand. Seven zero. Consider approval to enter into contract with GMA to provide revenue management services relative to hotel motel tax and provide services relative to hotel motel tax operation and compliance enhancement program, approving use of commission contingency fund and amend the budget accordingly.
Was this the presentation made to you, the reason, or did you?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Did you make a, did you, was this presented to us as a service of GMA, or did you approach them?
Well, I was aware that they had this service. They've had this service for some time now, and Marcus and I have been talking about the need to make sure that we're getting every penny that's supposed to be coming our way.
I suspect there's a good chance that there's skullduggery going on there. I'm glad to see this.
Is ten thousand dollars, do you expect more than ten thousand dollars worth of potential?
It's an estimate based on the information that we have, and some of those, that information that we have is benchmarks, industry standards, and variable seasonal rates and occupancy rates, and I think, based on the initial review, I think we'll be pleased with the results at the end.
Have they done it at all, or is it just a new program that they're starting?
This is a new program that we are entering into agreement with GMA.
Right, have they, do they have a set rate?
GMA's been doing it for several years, and I'm not aware of anybody who's lost money.
If we find fraud, can they be fined or recover that money?
There are two agreements before you. One is for the annual services, and the other agreement is for the compliance enhancement program where they'll review the records. The company that will be providing those services will review the records of the establishment, and then look further into the report, the dollars that are reported, and if they find a potential issue, they will go back three years with the Department of Revenue and the establishment, so we have an opportunity to recoup an additional, you know, three years' worth of missed opportunities.
Madam Chair, I move, we approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All in favor, let me know by your hand. Seven zero. Consider an amendment to water sale agreement and intergovernmental contract between the City of Griffin, Spalding County, and the Spalding County Water and Sewer Facility Authority by adding to Article Five a second paragraph for the purpose of allowing the City of Griffin to sell water to industrial customers under certain circumstances.
I, I move, we approve.
Uh, I'd like to ask a question. Do you have those certain, the circumstances printed out in the contract?
Says under certain circumstances, are they designated in the contract for certain circumstances?
Yeah, the circumstances are the usage of water has to meet our industrial customer usage requirement this month.
And is that in? I mean, under certain circumstances is very broad.
It says set forth by the City of Griffin to qualify for industrial water rates, so if they qualify for our industrial water rates that we presently have and they're out in the county, that's the, that's the qualification. That's the circumstance that would qualify them for an industrial customer.
Do we know how many businesses currently outside City of Griffin that would be impacted by this immediately at this point?
I don't think they have any.
Don't think there's any.
Because our threshold's fairly high.
Right, and, you know, I was just wondering why that's not definite in the, in the thing. Certain circumstances is a very broad statement, and so that's the reason I asked the question.
I don't know that my motion got a second, if I didn't hear a second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, let me know by your hand. Seven zero. Consider the transfer of ten thousand dollars from commission or contingency to Downtown Development Authority for replenishment of, and restitution of facade loan and grant program for downtown businesses and amend the budget accordingly.
Who's our downtown?
Adam.
No, I mean, on the board.
All right.
Mr. Mclemore, representing for D D A.
Yes, I mean, this is basically, I guess, when we go back to prior couple of years, we had typically allocated in the thirteen budget, what, twenty-five thousand, then the seventy-five thousand to build up the amount to do that block, the block redevelopment, and essentially that money is now allocated to, we're waiting for, give me the right acronym.
Well, we're waiting to get matching funds from sources to put with that money, and that money's basically been dedicated to the block plan project, and over the last few years, the facade grant loan program has been used quite extensively to the point where it's, it's a drive.
My purpose was to ask our representative on D D A or the downtown program, if he makes the motion, I mean, it means he approved of this.
Do you have, do you have clients waiting to apply for a facade loan?
Yes, ma'am.
And have all the others paid up like they were supposed to?
I believe everybody's, Adam, everybody's paid up, aren't you? Yeah, everybody's paid up, and we have a grant program and a loan program, but I think everybody's clear at this point, and we do have people asking for the money, and there's not any left.
I'm, I'm a second.
Yeah, I'll make, I'll make the.
Ryan's motion.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, let me know by your hand. Seven zero. Consider a resolution designating the city manager as open records officer pursuant to the authority of OCGA fifty-eighteen dash seventy-one, authorizing the designation of assistant open records officers, requiring that all open record requests be made in writing and filed with an open records officer or as designated assistant open records officer.
This is part.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, let me know by your hand.
Everybody salute the open records officer.
Okay.
Good and safe.
Um, oh, city manager, do you have anything?
Just a reminder, this is our only meeting this month. Our fourth Tuesday meeting has been canceled for the media and the public, and that's all I have.
Um, a city attorney?
Just to follow up with what Marcus was talking about with the GMA collecting the hotel motel tax as we go forward, you joined the class action lawsuit several years ago. The GMA and ACCG were both instrumental in bringing against certain of the hotel booking, online booking firms like Expedia and Orbis and Travelocity and whatnot. The court ruled a couple of weeks ago in that case and approved a proposed settlement of some of the past claims, so there will be some monies coming forth to us at some point in the future. It's going to be a pro rata amount based upon the class settlement. You're not gonna get a hundred percent on the dollar necessarily, but there'll be some money coming to us with some interest there on, so I think that's, that's good news, and hopefully going forward, they'll have this straightened out, where they will collect the correct amounts on the room rates that were charged, not just on the discount rates that these people resold them for.
Okay. Is that it? Commission, D D A?
Uh, no. Are we still, do we have to reenter? Is that a proper motion?
You had recessed this morning. You just need to go back into your closed session, but I think a motion would be appropriate to just let the minutes reflect.
Madam Chair, I move.
Let's finish our comments.
Okay.
Commissioner Hobart?
I'm good.
Uh, of course.
Now, I've been approached by several citizens to consider for us to do an in-house study about the public streets downtown that we designated as no smoking, since the streets belong, the sidewalks from the streets, the sidewalks belong to the entire general public, and in public places such as the Sixth Street Park, when they have an outdoor event, that smoking be prohibited, and then also have a group that would like to see the parking spaces redone on Hill Street, especially in this block between Bank and Solomon, and make it a more of a slant. When these great big pickup trucks park there, it's reducing the traffic to one lane, and years ago, the streets, the parking spaces were given more of a slant next to the First Baptist Church on Hill Street, and that took the tail end out of the street so that you had two lanes to travel. So I would like to see us pursue both of these options for the general public and bring it up for consideration for both. Perhaps Drew is the one that's gonna have to research the smoking ordinance, but, and it, I don't know how the Department of Transportation will be affected by it if we change this and do it more of a slant for parking out front.
The angles were changed because it eliminates, it increases the number of space available the way it's currently set up. The D D A was who originally said, let's get it back to the current angle, so maybe recommend go back to the D D A and let them.
I think it would be worth pursuing. I think that, you know, especially when.
You hold a permit from D O T. When the sidewalks were extended a few years ago, we had to get a permit, so that is their right-of-way, and there was at one point a plan that D O T wanted us to go to parallel parking only, and the city really didn't want that, and were able to reach a compromise. Now, the angle of that space, I think, is set by Traffic Engineering Design that D O T approved. I'd have to double check that, but.
I think we need.
There may be some way to alter that.
But you lose spaces every flatter you make.
Yeah, the flatter you make it towards parallel, the less spaces you're gonna have.
That's not necessarily a bad thing.
Well, the whole L C I design had bold bouts and a reduced angle of parking. That was part of that L C I study we did to do that very thing.
Yeah, we, you know, it just needs to be pursued. We, you know, sweep some things under the rug. I think that we've got an opportunity now to revisit this, and then also, in today's time, I think that we really need to address, have an ordinance to address the smoking. We have several, well, we, maybe not right now, but when we have tables out on the sidewalks for people to eat, they also smoke, and then people who are trying to get from point A to point B have to walk through that to get to their point, and it's offensive, and, and they have just as much right for it to be smoke-free as the people who do the smoke, and I think that we need to pursue that ordinance. A good many of Georgia towns are doing this. Is that it?
All right. Push that first with the D D A though, let them.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't have anything.
I think we need to pursue.
All right, then, I move that we return to executive session pursuant to OCGA Section Fifty, fourteen, two, one.
Hold on for a minute.
Paul.
My name is Robert Fowler. Two weeks ago, we came here for a hearing on the sidewalks for input from people in the areas of concern, and the signs throughout my neighborhood say that there was gonna be a continuance. Dr. Keller also stated that there would be a continuation of that hearing tonight. I've been here since six o'clock until now, and that continuation, the only continuation I heard was what was already been going to be out for bid. That's really, you know, the signs are very misleading. You probably wonder, where did that big crowd come from earlier? We all came here for that, and we didn't get it, and that's all I got to say.
Mr. Fowler, I think the chairperson did call for public comment, yes, at the time. It was on the agenda. Nobody, I think it was one gentleman stood up and asked a question. That was it. Nobody else asked to speak.
Okay, well, the crowd in general that was here did not understand that, neither did I, because I felt like this is my first meeting, as far as attending goes, and the decision was already made as far as what sidewalks would be left bid. What happened to the sidewalk around Grandview, and two families on East County don't want it on their yard, so, you know, as far as I'm concerned, it was knocked in the air right there.
That was, that was the reason we had the public hearing, for public input.
Yeah, well, that was item number four. I think the rest of us, we're sorry if you missed that.
Excuse me. What I asked was, was there anyone from the audience that would like to come forward and speak on these issues? Okay, well, obviously you didn't understand. I'm sorry if you didn't understand, but we did it, and the minutes, it's in the minutes if you would like to see that or hear it.
All right. That's unfortunate. I'll say, that misunderstanding, but I'll continue for the purpose of meeting with its attorney to discuss pending potential litigation.
Motion, motion and second according to closed session. All in favor, let me know by your hand.